I'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We've got a house full of folks in here tonight. Also, thank those that are watching the meeting on G10 television. We're going to begin tonight's meeting by standing and pledging allegiance to the flag, followed by our invocation by our city attorney, John Carter. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day. And as always, we give you thanks for the blessings you so graciously bestow upon us, individually and as the city of Jacksonville. Tonight, we especially give thanks for all of our public service personnel, public safety personnel, our police, and our fire and emergency service workers, who daily put their lives on the line for each of us and for our family members and our neighbors. We give thanks for their service, and we pray for them and their families. As always, we pray for our service members who are serving here and around the world, many who are serving in harm's way. Be with them and their families. And always give your guidance and your direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Members of the council, you have before you a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. And I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda. So moved. Any discussion here and now in all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, we have several presentations to make tonight, and I'm going to come around the front here. All right, the first presentation tonight, I would like to call a fellow up here that I have become very good friends with, and I think we've gotten a lot of things done since he's been stationed here. I'd ask Colonel Yoriak Escalante, I know you're here somewhere, to join me up front. A proud Texan. It is my honor to recognize this evening an outstanding American, Colonel Yoriak Escalante. He's a native of Mount Vernon, New York, and hails from Houston, Texas. He was commissioned in the Marine Corps after graduating from Texas A&amp;M University in December of 1986 with a BS in Building Construction. He also received an MA in Management from Webster University and an MS in National Resource Strategy from the Industrial College of the Armed Forces. As a Marine, Colonel Escalante was trained as a combat engineer. His military education includes the Basic Combat Engineer Officer Course, designation as a distinguished graduate of the U.S. Army Engineer Officer Advanced Course, the Marine Corps Command and Staff College, and the Industrial College of the Armed Forces. During his distinguished military career, Colonel Escalante has commanded at company, squadron, and regimental levels. He has been deployed numerous times in operations in Bosnia, Iraq, Afghanistan, and the Western Pacific. His decorations include the Defense Superior Service Medal, the Legion of Merit with Gold Star, the Bronze Star, the Meritoria Service Medal with two gold stars, the Navy and Marine Corps Combination Medal with Gold Star, and the Navy Achievement Medal. Colonel Escalante and his wife, Melissa, have two children. We have had the honor of working with Colonel Escalante while he served here as Deputy Commander of Marine Corps Installations East. Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, and Marine Corps, also you wore the two hats, of course, the two hats, also as the base commander here at Camp Lejeune. He's been here from October 19, 2014, to August 15, 2016, and is acting commander from October 2014 to June 2015, while his commanding general was deployed to Iraq. During this time, Colonel Escalante's leadership and initiative resulted in a successful mission accomplished by the Marine Corps Installations East Camp Lejeune during a dynamic and demanding wartime period. The city appreciates the role he has played in developing the spirit of cooperation and respect that exists between the base and the local community, especially his leadership of the Cooperative Planning Group. During his tenure at Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, won the 2015 Commander in Chief's Annual Award for Installation Excellence. That's a good feather in the hat there, isn't it?
It's pretty nice.
That's pretty nice. Colonel, your friendship and service here, if I had a medal to give you, I'd give it to you. Because you've, you know, I've been here a long time, and as I've told Colonel Escalante, you know, over the last 30 years, the relationship between the civilian population, the civilian world out here in Jacksonville, has come so far, as far as being able to work cooperatively to get things done that benefits every one of us. And Colonel, you played a very important role in the time that you, in the short time that you were here. I really get upset with the Marine Corps that they don't leave people here longer, okay? But he'll be retiring soon, after nearly 30 years, you don't look like you could have been here 30 years, 30 years of dedicated service to the United States Marine Corps and to our nation. We wish you and your family all the best. Hopefully, you'll end up back here sometime.
I hope so, too, too.
We wish you and your family good health, best wishes, and as you begin this next chapter in your life. For service to the city, I'd like to present a token of our appreciation here. As a matter of fact, you were here when we opened this, weren't you?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. Well, you really do appreciate it, Colonel. You've been a great pleasure to work with you. You're going to be missed. You've done a lot of things, not just to help the base out there at Camp Lejeune, but actually to help the citizens here in Jacksonville, and I really appreciate the service.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to have a group picture of you, sir. Ken, can you come up for a group picture, please? Colonel? Can you get them all in? Can you see Mr. Willingham?
Yes, Thomas, you can't see his shoes. I'm sorry.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to come up here tonight. Next, I'd like to have Carmella. I haven't seen Carmella. There's Carmella back there. Carmella George, she's our Community Programs Coordinator, and I'll get you to help me with the presentation of these certificates. This is for the Jacksonville Citizen Academy. The Jacksonville Citizen Academy is designed to offer the city residents who are interested in becoming more involved in local government and its activities, an opportunity to learn more about what the city government does, and offers direct insight to the various city operations. The summer 2016 Citizen Academy met for two hours weekly for five weeks, covering an overview of city government departments, budget, and elected officials, public services, recreation and parks, public safety, police and fire, development services and transit. Tonight, we're going to give completion certificates. These are going to be awarded and presented to 13 participants who have successfully completed the academy. I'm going to call your name and ask you to please come up, and I know some of you may have brought your photographer with you, and please, by all means, take all the pictures you want. The first person I'm going to call up is Sally Campbell. Congratulations.
I appreciate it. You've not even put up with us.
Why don't you stay up here with us? Let's get a group picture here in a few minutes. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Campbell. Donald Carter. Jesse Hansley. Joseph Kirchner. Evidently, he's not here. Gaston Morris. Brian O'Day. Annette Ramsey. Give her a hug. Nancy Robinson. Jane Sutton. Our very, is this our Kim Tillman?
There's not ever much space between us.
Our very own Kimberly Tillman. Gloria Whitney. All right, we had several other people that were not able to be with us tonight. Barisha Wilson wasn't able to be here, and Martha Gaudier, is that right? Gaudier? So if anybody wants to get a photograph of us, hey, our photographers up here.
We've got to take a class picture.
They don't have your brown.
Can you show me real quick?
They're actually going to get a screenshot in the control area.
Let's form two lines, because the cameras make it difficult. So ladies in the front, let's go, ladies in the front. Ms. Campbell, you have your right hand here.
I really appreciate y'all taking the time out of your schedule to do this. I hope it's a rewarding experience.
It was very, very interesting, and it taught us a lot, and for anybody who has a career.
Slide right in there. Okay, everybody look at the camera. This is your one chance to smile at a policeman who's taking your picture.
We see you in the booth really good. We're auditioning. There we go.
Did that help, Brittany?
It did. Perfect.
I'm so glad we started that program. I really think it's a wonderful opportunity for folks to get to know us a little better up here and what we do.
Well, Mayor, you should have seen, all I can say is, when you saw Ms. Campbell clawing out of the back of the garbage dumpster.
Were you in the dumpster? Next, we have a proclamation for Constitution Week, and I'd like to ask Ms. Ann Conkle, who's the Regent, and Debbie Marsh, the Chaplain of the Daughters of American Revolution, and David Benedict, children of the American Revolution, if you would come up front and join me, please. Oh, you have some more folks here with you? Come on up. Let's see, come on up, let's see who you are. All right. Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document. In 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Before we present this proclamation, I want to ask you, my good friend here, David, I'm going to let you tell them, give them a little recitation there of the Constitution.
We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, and promote the general welfare to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America.
You know the rest of it? Good job.
I have a copy for you.
Thank you. I've been wanting one of these.
Put it in your pocket.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Davis.
Thanks, Davis. You stay up here with us, okay? We've got a proclamation. I'm going to read this one, okay? Let me get this back up here. Whereas the Constitution is a central instrument of government and the supreme law of America, and whereas our founding, our forefathers upheld a belief that remains at the heart of America today, that men and women of free will have the capacity to shape their own destinies, and whereas September 17th, 2016, marks the 200th and 29th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2016, as Constitution Week in the city of Jacksonville, and I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the founding fathers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms granted to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And I'm going to present you with this proclamation. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
This means a lot to our chapter, the Joseph Montford chapter. I thank Mayor for letting us have some celebrations this week. One in particular was this past Saturday at the Freedom Fountain, where we celebrated bells across America, ringing bells and ringing at four o'clock in the afternoon, which was the actual date and time of the signing of the original Constitution. And I just thank you. As you come next year, we're going to do it again, and so we want you to come. Thank you so very, very much.
Next, we have a proclamation for the National Child Passenger Safety Week. I'd like to ask Spencer Lee, Deputy Chief of Fire and Emergency Services, if you would join me up front, please. Anybody else you want to bring up?
Could we bring Ms. Kristy Pitchford and Beth Terry?
Bring anybody you wish. Ladies. September 18th through the 24th is National Child Passenger Safety Week. Throughout the year, and especially this week, Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services works hard to educate and motivate citizens to keep their children safe while riding in vehicles. I have, we have prepared a proclamation to read tonight, and I will read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Jacksonville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas protecting children is everyone's responsibility. Each year, thousands of children are tragically injured or killed in car crashes. In fact, car crashes are a leading cause of death for children. And whereas Jacksonville's fire and emergency personnel are committed to reducing the occurrence of injuries through child passenger safety seat inspections and education using nationally certified child passenger safety seat technicians. And whereas by working together, Citizens, Oslo Safe Kids Coalition, and the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services personnel can work towards eliminating these preventable deaths and injuries. And whereas the city of Jacksonville is committed to educating parents and caregivers about the best ways to keep kids safe while traveling in cars, no matter how short or long the trip. And whereas we encourage all parents and caregivers to take advantage of this service to make sure their children are in the right car seats for their age and size, and that the seats are installed correctly. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim September 18th through the 24th, 2016, as Child Passenger Safety Week in the city of Jacksonville, and I urge everyone to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time. Spencer?
I'd just like to take the opportunity to raise the awareness to the citizens and those in attendance here, that the importance of this program that we're doing is a service that the Fire and Emergency Services provides, with the blessing of the city and city council. We provide this service to all citizens who come to the fire stations. They can make an appointment by calling the fire station's main number to set up an appointment to have their car seat inspected. And the purpose is to inspect the seat and to teach the parent how to install the seat, so that they use the seat the right way, the right time, every time, in every car for every child. And our goal is to hopefully eliminate all childhood injuries that result from vehicle accidents because of safe seat installations. And I'd like to thank Ms. Beth Terry and Ms. Kristy Pitchford for their efforts with the Oslo Safe Kids Coalition, working with Assistant Fire Marshal Randy Jones, which is our coordinator for Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services. We realize that here in this town, between Oslo Memorial Hospital and Naval Hospital, that there's more children birthed in this area than there is in eastern, entire eastern coast. So there's a lot of babies born, so a lot of car seats are used, and we just want to make sure they're safe riding.
How many technicians you have that can do this here locally?
We've got about 30 technicians.
So there's no reason for anybody not to get it done.
That's right.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. All right, I'd like to ask my friends up here on the front row from the Leather and Lace Motorcycle Club to come up and join me again this year. Ladies, thanks for coming out. Good to see you. Leather and Lace Motorcycle Club is sponsoring Eye Fielder Shoes, a one-mile walk fundraising event where men will wear women's shoes to symbolize that they, too, can get breast cancer, and that this disease is not just one that solely happens to women. The event will be held on Sunday, October 2nd, 2016, at New River Harley-Davidson, starting at noon. Proceeds will be directed to the John Hopkins Avon Foundation Breast Center, and I have a proclamation that I would like to read at this time, in recognition of this week. Whereas prevention and early detection are key to winning the fight against breast cancer, and although the exact cause is unknown, regular screenings are most effective way to detect this disease early and save lives. And whereas breast cancer is not gender biased, 300,000 new cases of breast cancer in women is projected in 2016, and 2,000 new cases will be diagnosed in men. And those men who are diagnosed are commonly also diagnosed with carrying a BRCA2 gene mutation that they will pass on to their children. Approximately 12% of women carry this gene mutation. And whereas North Carolina is working very hard to lower the mortality rates and has shown a slight decrease in death through early detection and education. And whereas in the continued endeavor to, for awareness and the research needed to combat breast cancer, Leather and Lace Motorcycle Club is sponsoring Eye Fielder Shoes, a fundraising event where men will walk one mile wearing women's shoes, symbolizing that they, too, can get breast cancer, and that this disease is not just one that solely happens to women. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the Eye Fielder Shoes Walk will be held Sunday, October 2nd, 2016, at the New River Harley-Davidson shop over on US-17, and it will start at noon. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of October 2nd through October 8th, 2016, as Eye Fielder Shoes Breast Cancer Awareness Week in the city of Jacksonville, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and support this observance as an opportunity to bring awareness to this disease and the research needed to combat it. Ladies, I thank you very much for coming out, and I'll give you this. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our honor.
This is our honor and privilege to stand before, and this is our sixth year doing this event, and to promote breast cancer awareness in men is, because two thousand new cases each year is one too many. So we hope to pass awareness on by doing this event, and we challenge each one of you to come on out and support this event, and walk a mile in women's shoes, or just walk. So I challenge each one of you to come on out that Sunday, it's the second of October, and it's at the New River Harley-Davidson. Thank you, Mayor. We really...
Thank you very much. Get a picture here. You good?
All right, thank you.
You don't have, you don't have the EMS people standing by out there for... I'd like to ask Randy Jones, Assistant Fire Marshal, if he would come up and join me, and Spencer Lee, Chief. We're going to do a presentation for Fire Prevention Week. October ninth through the fifteenth is Fire Prevention Week. The City of Jacksonville would like to emphasize its commitment to fire and life safety education and hazardous risk reduction efforts for businesses and citizens by our Fire and Emergency Services Personnel. And we're going to do a proclamation designating October ninth through the fifteenth as that week that we're going to observe, and I will read the proclamation that has been prepared. And I'm going to figure out a way to keep that light from blinding me. There we go. That's a good angle there. Whereas the City of Jacksonville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas Jacksonville's Fire and Emergency Services Personnel are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires and fire injuries through prevention and life safety education. And whereas Jacksonville residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas having a working smoke alarm is associated with forty-nine percent reduction in the chance of dying in a reported fire. And whereas the two thousand sixteen Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't Wait, Check the Date," replace smoke alarms every ten years, effectively serves to remind us of the simple action we can take to keep our homes and families safe from fire during Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now therefore I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim October ninth through the fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all citizens to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week, two thousand sixteen, to ensure that each home has a working smoke detector, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services. Thank you, guys, for the work that you do. You're always out there and ready to serve the public. I'd like to present you with this proclamation, and would you like to speak?
Well, first of all, we'd like to thank the Mayor and Council for this proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and just like the Mayor was saying, just make sure you're checking your smoke detectors. The saying this year is "Don't Wait, Check the Date." Every ten years, you need to replace your smoke detectors. The ones that still have the regular batteries you had to replace twice a year, just take the detector down, look at the date on the back of it, make sure it's still in that ten year range. And now they have the new lithium smoke detectors that you can put up that will last for ten years before you have to replace them. So it's focused around that ten-year date, just make sure you're checking them and make sure they're still in that ten-year range.
Thank you. Thanks. Next, we have a presentation of a proclamation for Minority Enterprise Development Week, and at this time I'd like to call up Adrian James, who's the Chair of Minority Business Services, and Lorette Legan, and any members of the Minority Business Service Committee that are present. I got it, I got it right, didn't I? I've been practicing. Okay. All right. It's with a great deal of pleasure to be able to present this proclamation for the upcoming Minority Business, or Minority Enterprise Development Week. And I'll read this proclamation, and thank you all for coming tonight, really appreciate it. I'm going to try to do this, I'm getting a lot of glare, I don't want to turn my back to anybody, so. Whereas the Jacksonville Oslo Chamber of Commerce will observe Minority Enterprise Development Week, October tenth through the fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. And whereas at a time when many Americans are facing extraordinary economic challenges, supporting the development of minority-owned businesses will help accelerate the revitalization of our economy. And whereas the goal of the Chamber's Minority Business Services Division is to expand the growth of our community's small and minority-owned businesses. And whereas Minority Enterprise Development Week's theme, "Investing in the Future," offers increased opportunity to commemorate the tremendous value minority entrepreneurs and their employees bring to our community, our history and our economy. And whereas the Jacksonville Oslo Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber's Minority Businesses Services Committee will honor a Minority Entrepreneur of the Year and Linda L. Richardson, Minority Business Advocate of the Year. Now therefore I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim October tenth through the fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, as Minority Enterprise Development Week in the City of Jacksonville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate the significance of investing in the future of this community. Lorette, I'm going to present this...
To my chair, please.
To the chair.
Thank you.
And Lorette, I believe you have some things you wanted to say.
I'm going to let this lady talk.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Council members. We're going into year number eleven, and we are so excited. We have a lot of things that we've planned, our committee, the people that you see here, along with some of our executive committee for the Chamber of Commerce and board members of the Chamber of Commerce. We work diligently to make sure that we are representing everyone, that no one is left out or overlooked. And so we're going to kick off our week with a luncheon, and we have some different things throughout the week that can really help you understand what the Minority Committee at the Chamber is doing, and what the week really stands for. And so we just thank you, Mayor. Eleven years, y'all have given us your support, and we certainly appreciate it. I don't know where Lisa is. I want Lisa to come over here with me. Lisa is the Chamber staff member that heads up the Minority Business Services Division, and I believe Lisa is going to give you a little bit of insight as to what that week will entail.
Our first event is going to be our Med Week Award Luncheon with Linda L. Richardson and the Minority Entrepreneur of the Year. That will be at Monford Point Marine Association, Monday, October tenth, at noon. And then on Tuesday, we are having the Med Week Mingle, which is a business after-hours at Liberty Point at Piney Green. And then on Thursday, we are adding an African-American Heritage Trail site. We are having Edney Chapel School, which is off of Roadstown, added to it. It will be our eighteenth site on the African-American Heritage Trail. And then on Friday, we are having a Minority Enterprise Development Week Presents: Extending Your Sale Season Seminar. That is our...
Next, we have a presentation of a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I'd like to ask Dawn Rochelle and Becca Bast from the Oslo County Partnership for Children, Deputy Chief Tim Alfatano from Jacksonville Public Safety, and Lindsay Pascoe as a Crisis Counselor with the Department of Public Safety. Good. How are you doing? I have a proclamation that I'm going to read at this time. Again, I'm turning my back to you, so I'm going to wheel back around here. Let's see. There we go. Whereas each year, too many people are taken from us by suicide. These tragedies have an immeasurable impact on families and communities. And whereas suicide is a leading cause of death in Oslo County for residents under the age of fifty. And whereas we can get critical help for people in crisis and raise awareness of the importance of preventing suicide in every community. And whereas the Crisis Prevention Coalition of Oslo County is forging solutions to prevent mental health and substance abuse crisis. And whereas our community must continue to actively develop collaborative partnerships, such as the Mind Up Pilot Program at Cloud Irwin Elementary School, and crisis intervention training at the Jacksonville Center for Public Safety. Now therefore I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of September, two thousand sixteen, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Jacksonville, and I urge all citizens to join us in recognizing suicide as a complex but preventable public health crisis in our community. Dawn, I'm going to present this to you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Can I say a moment?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you so much, and, you know, I'm always sort of grounded by the reason that we stand here, is because there have been suicides, and there continue to be suicidal attempts, suicidal ideations, that some of you and many people who are watching face within their families. And I'm very cognizant of the amount of first responders that we have here, who are many times the first to respond to those situations, to hopefully have the opportunity to deescalate them. I would like to publicly thank, from the very beginning of the recognition of the need to convene this public group, the City of Jacksonville, led by Chief Mike Inero, who cannot be with us tonight, and those members of the Jacksonville Police Department, Dr. Woodruff, and the City Council, have spent numerous hours, not only providing the data that we need in order to advance this issue in the community, but really sharing the stories and the heart behind the work that our citizens do in our community. And I would like, you know, it takes a, it takes a group of committed citizens, a village, if you will, in order to really address the needs that we continue to have in our community. We cannot lose sight that suicide is one hundred percent preventable. And when I say that, that's not to share that someone should have done something differently necessarily, because we know that when people make the decision, sometimes that's the decision that they made unbeknownst to so many. But we have to be able to put the message there, that there are so many people who you can reach out to in our community, and then we have to continue to create those services that are welcoming, that you don't have to wake, and that are available without regard to income. So thank you again on behalf of the Coalition, to the City for your continued effort and support, and your time, and your talent, and your resources, because together I do believe that we can create a different experience for people in our community experiencing issues with mental health concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, women in the front, men in the back. Let's get this thing on.
Oh, no. Amazing work.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a mark.
We have a mark.
Hey, Doug, take this one.
I also need Captain Spettor Code. Payable PD? From Payable? Payable Police Department. Okay. Do you bring anybody you want? Vanessa Smith, where are we? Stacy? You know Stacy was a runner at one time, now she does now.
Vanessa, you can come right in the middle, because you had everything to do with this. She put this hot thing down.
Let's see, we have this, the Olympics, North Carolina Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run. This is a five-kilometer race, was held on July thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, as a partner event for National Night Out. This was the fourth year for the event, coordinated by members of the Jacksonville Police Department Traffic Division and the City of Jacksonville Recreation and Parks, running with the five K, raised six thousand ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents to benefit North Carolina Special Olympics. That's great. Thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate y'all having me here tonight, and honoring these officers who did this great thing in raising money for the Special Olympics Torch Run, specifically the Law Enforcement Torch Run. In nineteen eighty-one, Chief Richard Lemunyan from Wichita, Kansas, got a group of officers together, and they did a run similar to this, and they raised six hundred dollars for the Special Olympics. That caught fire and went nationwide, and now it's international. I recently returned from Phoenix, Arizona, where we had the Law Enforcement Torch Run Special Olympics Conference. Nations from all around the world were represented, agencies from all around the country represented. In two thousand and fifteen, from that humble beginning of six hundred dollars in Wichita, Kansas, in nineteen eighty-one, because of efforts like this, North Carolina, the Law Enforcement Torch Run, raised fifty-five million dollars for Special Olympics, and it's all for stuff like this. Groups of officers getting together, we call ourselves the Guardians of the Flame. We guard the flame for the Special Olympic athletes, we raise money for them so they can train, so they can travel, and it really gives them a great outlet. It gives them something to look forward to, and speaking to the athletes and interacting with the athletes, it's unbelievable. So the support from agencies like this, six thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars there, North Carolina raised over a million dollars in and of itself, okay? Now if you think about North Carolina, there's a hundred counties in North Carolina, so there's a hundred sheriff's departments in North Carolina. That's a hundred agencies alone, with just a sheriff's office, and then you add the police, agencies, and all the other law enforcement agencies, so we're well over five hundred agencies. And that million dollars, a little over a million dollars, was raised by less than a hundred agencies. So our goal this year, as a member of the Council, we're trying to get more agencies involved, because with less than a hundred agencies, if we can raise over a million dollars, imagine if we had everyone involved. The money would be phenomenal, and it all goes to a great cause. A lot of people worry about charities. Eighty-five percent of this money raised goes directly to the athletes, so it's a wonderful charity, very well managed, and just a phenomenal cause. So I thank you, I commend you, Chief, letting your officers get involved in this, and the spirit of these officers is guarding the flame is awesome, so keep it up. My applause.
I'm short, we'll move it down a little bit. I just want to thank everybody at the Police Department and Chiefs for our support of this event. It's been wonderful putting it together every year. We have a great team that puts it together, and this year we had almost double the amount of runners that we had last year, so thank you to our community for just supporting, number one, law enforcement and the Special Olympics. I look forward to seeing you guys next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since his employment with the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services, Lyndon has served as a firefighter one, firefighter two, firefighter three, driver one, and driver operator two. Lyndon holds certifications as a firefighter two, driver operator of pumps and aerials, fire instructor one, fire inspector one, EMT basic technical rescue or specialty certifications in machinery rescue and surface water rescue. Additionally, Lyndon has received an extrication award and a lifesaving award. Today, Lyndon will be pinning on the rank of captain, and Lyndon's wife Heather will assist during this presentation. Raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Lyndon Sutherland...
I, Lyndon Sutherland.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will be alert...
That I will be alert.
...and vigilant...
And vigilant.
...in performing my duties...
In performing my duties.
...as a captain of the City of Jacksonville...
As a captain of the City of Jacksonville.
...Fire and Emergency Services...
Fire and Emergency Services.
...that I will not be influenced...
That I will not be influenced.
...in any matter...
In any matter.
...on account of personal bias or prejudice...
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
...that I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
...the Constitution and laws of the United States...
Constitutional laws of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina...
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
...not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
...and that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
...discharge and execute...
Discharge and execute.
...the duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
...as a captain of the City of Jacksonville...
As a captain of the City of Jacksonville.
...Fire and Emergency Services...
Fire and Emergency Services.
...according to the best of my skills...
According to the best of my skills.
...abilities and judgment...
Abilities and judgment.
...so help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now, we had this pre-punch. We pre-punched, this is you.
You got it. No blue.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Looks good.
Appreciate it.
Getting younger and younger. Or I'm getting older and older. I know that a lot of you here are here, came for the presentations, and we had quite a few tonight. Thank you for staying with us and honoring all those that either got a proclamation or received a promotion, and I'm going to take a timeout here. We're going to take a timeout on the field, and I'm going to give anybody that wants to make a run for the door a chance to at this time, but you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay.
How are you? Good to see you. Yeah, thank you. Your staff's been amazing. Well, so, I mean, Dr. Woodruff has been right there pushing for me. And I think that's going to be a party for us. Good to see you. Hey, John, how are you? Good to see you. Good to see you.
I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to be here.
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Good to see you out there. Look, I'm trying to figure that it gets like this, get out. I've been blasted, something happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
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 Now, we had this pre-punch.
We pre-punched, this is you.
You got it.
No blue.
Yeah.
It's good though.
I'm going to go again.
Sorry.
I dropped on the camera.
Sorry.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Getting younger and younger. Or I'm getting older and older. I know that a lot of you here are here, came for the presentations, and we had quite a few tonight. Thank you for staying with us and honoring all those that either got a proclamation or received a promotion, and I'm going to take a timeout here. We're going to take a timeout on the field, and I'm going to give anybody that wants to make a run for the door a chance to at this time, but you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay.
Yeah, yeah.
Might as well.
Good to see you.
How are you? Good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. Your staff's been amazing.
Well, so, I mean, Dr. Woodruff has been right there pushing for me.
And I think that's going to be a party for us.
Can I turn the air on? It's a little hot in here.
Guys, I think, I think the manager had it nailed on the head. What is our mission?
Exactly.
You know, that's, that's.
We'll talk about it obviously at that workshop. Nobody else can talk back.
Mr. Massey, you think you can turn it a little bit lower?
A little higher.
A little higher. No, I'm being facetious. Yeah, I think we can get it just a little bit colder.
Is that, is that a record on presentations? It has to be. My leg went numb about halfway through.
You know what they got the setting on right now, don't you? Hog killing time.
You all have been down there with that clean light up there. That sun lamp.
It gets warmed up.
Yeah. The sun lamp up there. Okay, okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and go back in session. Give those folks in the room there enough time to see that. All right, back in session. We have, uh, the next thing we have tonight is we have our first, uh, session of public comment for the evening. Nobody signed up on the sheet, but maybe somebody came in. After the sheet was picked up, did I see anybody? Any, anybody raise your hand? Okay. We're gonna have the adoption of the minutes, uh, from a September 6, 2016 regular workshop meeting, and the consent items that are on tonight's agenda. We need to move approval.
Second.
End of discussion. Here none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, the next item on the agenda for tonight is a, uh, item number six. It's a special use, uh, special use permit in site, a type three site plan for the Father's House, located 128 Woodland Drive. This is a quasi judicial hearing. So at this time, I'm going to recess the regular council meeting and open the public hearing in this matter. And Jeremy Smith, if you would be sworn, please, do you spare the information you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-yo?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Uh, agenda item six is a special use permit in type three site plan for Father's House Church. Is a application, all right, let me, I'll go over the location first, sorry. It is located at 128 Woodland Drive. The vicinity map before you, just off of Hargett Street. Little bit closer view, you can see the property backs up to the New River Shopping Center. This is aerial photography of the site, it's currently undeveloped. This property is zoned RSF seven, and United Kingdom Ministries has submitted a special use permit in type three site plan for a proposed religious institution or church for a two thou, uh, proposed at 2,870 square feet. Churches or religious institutions are a special use in the RSF seven zoning district. Therefore, it is gone through the planning advisory board and is now before you tonight. Properties across Woodland Drive and to the northwest are all zoned RSF seven and used for single-family dwellings. Property to the immediate, uh, northeast is zoned corridor commercial, and that's the New River Shopping Center. And to the southeast is an undeveloped tract that is adjacent to Hargett Street. Before you on the screen is the type, type three site plan. The planning advisory board reviewed this application and request at their September 12, 2016 meeting, and has recommended approval of the request. Staff has also recommended approval of this request, finding, with findings of fact A through G being found in the affirmative. Uh, the applicant is represented by Mr. John Pierce, who is in attendance and may be able to address any questions that city council may have, as well as Reverend Ray Bradley, uh, who represents United Kingdom Ministries. And, uh, staff would be happy to answer any questions that city council may have regarding this request.
Counsel, do you have any, uh, questions regarding the evidence that Mr. Smith has given?
I do, Mayor. Jeremy, I've been, uh, contacted by some neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
People in the neighborhood with concerns, and as a result of their concerns, I took a ride over to the respective location. Was somewhat taken aback by what I found, but I took a little closer look. And I've just got one question for you. On the site plan, you've got a proposed one-story wood building.
Correct.
Okay. That's not what I encountered. I did a little bit of research on my own, and I found another description, and maybe John can clarify it for me, or someone, of a description of a 2011 TNR custom triple-wide, which is what I saw.
Okay.
Was three, to my viewpoint, used modular units. Can you tell me that three triple-wide, a triple-wide modular unit is a one-story wood building?
I, I would, I would agree that that is not meeting what has been preemptively pulled on through the property without permits. Um, those modular units have not, there's been no approvals for those. Those were pulled out there on the own behalf of the developer. But I would agree, three modulars are not a wood structure.
Thank you.
Can you explain how they could be out there?
Um, I, I, they, as far as I know, they would be under violation. They have not been served a violation. Um, it is a violation of stormwater, um, and erosion control, and as well as zoning.
Right, but how can you move forward with an approval if you're in violation?
And typically, when you have a, a violation, uh, you, you're, if you, if you do work without a permit, you're automatically fined. I mean, from the construction side, uh, we've been on the unfortunate side of happening, have that happen. So, just a little wondered why they haven't, haven't been served with any sort of notice at this point.
I would, I would add that, um, I, I do not know if there's been any violations issued. Those are outside of my area, um, but.
I can address those for you. Uh, the city manager's office was contacted yesterday evening, approximately five o'clock, relative to the fact that clearing had occurred on the site. Uh, this morning, we had members of the city staff, Pat Donovan Potts and, uh, Alton Cox, who's an engineer, visit the site. Uh, they did verify that no permits have been pulled from a stormwater standpoint, nor from erosion control. Uh, violations will be issued. Uh, that's completely independent of, of actions you may take tonight. But you are correct that violations are there, and citations will be issued.
I have a question. So although something's not in compliance, it could still come through the process?
Yes, sir. The, the matter before you is a land use decision. The matters that we're discussing regarding violations is a code enforcement. So they actually are filed, from one standpoint, they're tied together. From another standpoint, they're actually independent actions. So. Now, Jeremy, I have one question. Uh, the site plan has an area, as you can see on the, on the graphic. Is the petitioner in the ownership of all of the area where the parking lot and the, uh, and the building is, as well as all of the area that has, uh, a hatched mark around it?
Sorry about that. If I can get the ink turned on the screen, I will outline the.
Please.
Parcel. Yep, that is the parcel in question. Uh, I believe it's, um, yep.
Okay, and if council approves the, pardon me, if council approves the special use permit, are they approving anything beyond this site plan that shows the improvements that are shown there? And if the area that's not shown to be improved needs to be cleared or developed, will that have to come back to city council?
They are required buffering to the rear of the apartment, to, um, New River Shopping Center, a 30-foot type A, but they are proposing to leave that natural and more than meets the intent of the ordinance. Um, I do have an assessment in there. If they were to ever clear that natural vegetation, they would need to install a type A buffer. But if they propose to expand the parking lot, the, the building, add anything, any new structures or anything, but that would come back before city council.
And under the site plan, uh, do they propose to clear the vegetation that's between the parking lot, moving down the street, down woodland, closer to the residential units?
This area that I am highlighting on the screen is proposed to be left in its natural state.
And if council so chose to approve, they could make a condition that that would have to remain in its natural state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pierce, are you gonna speak?
John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. What we're looking at tonight is a.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That's my fault, John. Do you spare the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-yo? Thank you, sir.
John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. And what we're looking at tonight is approval of a special use permit. As a matter of fact, if it was this, if I'd have been here in 2014, we wouldn't have ever come before the board, but the facts are, the UDO is, is, uh, really is what changed the code where religious institutions require a special use permit. But this plan has been presented to the staff, and it meets all the merits of the special use permit, the Camel Land Use Plan Harmony, and they've agreed in location of the driveways is compliant. And we are serviced by a 36-foot wide road. It's just not a two-lane facility. And to address some of the issues, the land use permit is what we're seeking. We actually have done a site plan. Dave Newsom, my engineer, is prepared erosion control. And once we got the land use permit, we've, we've done all, basically all the design. We certainly would pull an erosion control permit prior to. But according to what I understand, the, the state law says that we can disturb an acre, which I was unaware initially, uh, Pastor Bradley was desperate to find a place to put the modular units. And he put them there, but to be quite honest with you, I've looked at it, and I don't think he's cleared an acre. Although we will present an erosion control plan, we know we're responsible for maintaining erosion. So we, we know that we need to probably go out and put a silt fence up shortly. The proper, the plans has, the erosion control plan has been prepared, or if it hadn't been finalized, Dave Newsom will prepare it. And as far as the stormwater, according to state statute or state laws, you can improve 10,000, and, uh, you can add an additional 10,000 square feet. But we, we know we, we, we're gonna apply for a low-density permit. I'm well aware of that. But I was unaware initially that Pastor Bradley had pulled the units there. But I want to make sure the council does look and see what the final units would have looked like. There will be, they're not gonna look as due now. In fact, I've submitted renderings, if you would, Jeremy. I'd be glad to show you what the render says, what they look like when you're in finished form. This is what the front will look at, will look like, and the rear. There'll be, there'll be siding put on them, and there will be stone on the front and the rear, and there'll be service with a handicap ramp. And the air conditioning units that's on them now will be turned towards the woods, and it won't be visible from the road front at all. And we meet the parking requirements, we meet all the requirements in codes and ordinances. And I'm here to answer any questions after, if you have any of them now or after the public hearing.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Pierce?
Thank you.
Jeremy, before we go further, one quick question back to you. Have you done, has there been any kind of assessment or observation as far as the impact of traffic in that area?
Um, the transportation department, or Transportation Services Department was, is part of the TRC, and they made some comments on the driveway, um, improvements and whatnot. Um, but it did not trigger a traffic impact analysis, um, based on the size and pose use. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and now, uh, is anyone present wishes to speak to this matter? Ma'am? You'll have to come over here to the podium here. And if you would, please. I swear again, do you spare the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-yo?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name is Joanna Darnell, and I live at 1 Park Place, which is just off of Woodland. Um, I am so glad that the creek was mentioned, because on the site plan map, it doesn't show the creek. And that Cheney Creek is our water supply. Am I right? It does feed into our water supply. So, my concern was that there is soil erosion and stuff there now. If you looked, if you looked there, sir. And, um, that things have happened without regard to zoning and regulations and laws. So, does this set a precedent for how the church will then deal with other things in the future, other issues in the future? Just like the modules are there. The modules are there now, and there's no permit to put them there? Certainly, if I had done something like that, or anybody else in the neighborhood. So is that how the church, it just sets a bad precedence? Or is that how they're gonna deal with the issues in the future? And my next concern is there shouldn't have been a traffic, something triggered about the traffic, because all of that traffic is gonna not dump out onto Hargett, it's dumping out onto Woodland unless they have their driveway on Hargett. And so, when they go out Woodland, all those homes, and then it's already sometimes dangerous there. There's, people walk their dogs, their kids. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and I'm so happy to be there. But it is gonna dump all that traffic out onto the Woodland Drive. And is there something, you know, who's to say how things are gonna be handled in the future if there's traffic issues?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you. All right, somebody else had their hands up? Let's see, the first one, Mr. Yusuf. Please, uh, raise your right hand. Do you spare the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-yo?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the clerk.
My name's July Yusuf, and I live at 300 Woodland Drive. We have a lot of neighbors that are really concerned about this project, and we walked around, and we've got a little petition of 28 names we'd like to turn in to. They're neighbors that couldn't be here tonight, that are as unhappy with this as we are. One of our big concerns is the safety of the neighborhood. All of the other non-residential buildings that are in the neighborhood front and enter and exit, and they all face Hargett Street and the cemetery. This building will not do that, because they don't own the lot that's on Hargett Street. So all of the entrance and exit is going to be on Woodland Drive. Um, they're either going to be turning left across the road to get onto Hargett Street, or they're gonna be coming through the neighborhood to exit at Johnson or further up at Cana on Johnson. Um, this is one of the older neighborhoods in the city. You can actually see it from City Hall. There are no sidewalks in this neighborhood. They're proposing that they put a sidewalk in, but that doesn't change everybody else's property. And, uh, the school bus lets off kids in the street. People are walking in the street all the time. People walk their dogs. People walk their babies in baby strollers and all. And because it's older, we don't have sidewalks. And that's a big safety concern with us. We're already having problems with people coming in on Har, from Hargett to Woodland and cutting up, um, to Johnson. And we have a curve right there where Park Place comes into, um, Woodland, that we're having a problem with people speeding through the neighborhood already. We had had some talk about coming to the city or the police department about putting in, um, a speed bump. So we're already getting, um, problems with traffic back there. The other thing is, we looked at churches in town, 'cause this is, we have no objection to a church at all. There's several churches in the neighborhood. But this is one of the few churches. We've only been able to find one other church that was in a street that had no sidewalks, and it is a dead-end street. It's, uh, Grace Baptist over on Roosevelt Road. Every other church in the city that I've been able to find, and I Google and look at them, is either on a major street, or it's on a corner. And, um, that keeps the traffic flow from a, from a church from, um, interfering with the neighborhood. That's, um, a big problem because of the, not having the exit and entrance on Hargett. The other problem that we have is the buildings. Um, we looked around the city too, and we can only find two of, of these modular buildings. One is on White Street. It's the women's clinic. That's in the industrial park section of the city over on White Street. The other one is a doctor's office that's over on Doctor's Park Drive. That's also an industrial commercial section of the city. There are none of these modulars in any neighborhood in the city. Um, this is an older neighborhood. It's mostly brick houses and white frame houses, um, all with peaked roofs. Um, there is nothing that looks like this. And I understand that one of the things that you all are asked to consider is if it's in harmony with the neighborhood and the characteristics, and it is not in harmony or, uh, the characteristic of our neighborhood. So, anyway, that's what my, I have to say. And can I give this to you? And it's got a copy of the letter that we all shared with the neighborhood too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, another show of hands? The hand. Yes, sir. You, you had two fingers up.
Good evening. Um, I'm Robert Zorzi. I live at 310 Woodland Drive, and, uh, moved in, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's my, my fault again. I keep, I keep losing my place here. Do you spare the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-yo?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Yes, uh, my name's Robert Zorzi, and I'm at 310 Woodland Drive. And, uh, my business partner and I bought the house in, uh, 20, well, actually it was at the end of 2013. It was a foreclosure. There were a number of foreclosures in the neighborhood. Just a little more background about it. I've been a real estate investor myself for 43 years, and a licensed, uh, real estate broker and salesperson for over 30 years, active. And I've, I've brought expert witness to different things, more in Florida than here. I'm new to this area. But real estate is real estate. The area had a number of foreclosures in it when we first went in there. Most of them, I think just about every single one of them have sold. Some of the foreclosures that sold under 100,000 recently sold for over 300,000. A house that, you, the city, and I don't remember the address on Woodland Drive, the White House, you had a, like, uh, you were ready to demolish it, and we were horrified. So thank God, a developer came, took that house, the white two-story house there, redid it. It just recently sold for $430,000. I'm just saying that my, my point of view is that this church, which has, is, is trailers to me, coming up in the neighborhood, is going to diminish the value of the neighborhood. The value of the neighborhood has been going up. It brings more income tax revenue, or not income, but real estate tax revenue to the city and, and, um, to the county. So by doing this, it's, it's setting us back. So many of the neighbors have done incredible things, and, and I know Randy, and it sounds like Bob went over to the neighborhood to view it themselves. I mean, when I came around that corner, I was stunned, and I didn't see the, the, um, number to call about this meeting until just like the last few weeks, 'cause I was wondering what was going on there. In addition, and, you know, it's way back in the seventies, but I have a BS in biology. And, um, there was a drainage ditch, or a branch or something, that went right through the center of where they had cleared. And when they started bringing in the, the trailers, they filled that in. They brought in, um, broken-up concrete, and there's piles of, there's a pile probably about as tall as I am, and broken-up slabs of concrete sitting there. So, um, basically, it's not in harmony with the neighborhood. The gentleman, he may say that it's in line with all the, all the, all the details and specs, but as far as the, the general, it's, it's just not. And, um, you know, like, like I'm gonna say, it was so sad if it had been brick or something different or faced Hargett, but this is not right, that, that it should be in there. And the number of parking spaces they're making there are more than the number of houses and probably the vehicles that use that road for, for that neighborhood. So it's almost, almost doubling the amount of cars through there. So, you know, I try to count the, I don't know, you went house to house. I don't know how many houses there are that would use that exit, but I don't think there are 53, you know, so now you're, you're adding 53 more spaces, and who knows if they're gonna be parking on the street? But it's just not in, in harmony. And also, I was set back, and I felt like it was a front, that, that they started doing all that work and, and tearing down the forest and, and filling in the ditch and bringing those trailers in, and there was no approval. So I, I concur with my neighbor there that how can you trust them to say that they're gonna do this? And, um, thank you for the, for the time.
Other show of hands? Young lady in the back? Raise your right hand. Do you spare the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-yo?
Yes.
Please state your name and address to the clerk.
My name is Kendall Simandiris. Um, I live at 207 Woodland Drive, which is just a couple houses down on the opposite side of the street from the proposed site. My husband Nick and I bought the house about a year ago, um, and it's, some people might know, but it's the house that, when we bought it, the money went to the city to do the, the fence, was my understanding, around the cemetery. So anyways, but, um, I'm a real estate agent. I've been a real estate agent for, uh, the past 13 years. My husband and I are both, um, local, and he's a builder, and so obviously, we did, uh, we love the neighborhood. We knew the church was going in when we, when we bought the house, 'cause the sign has been there displayed for quite a long time, so that was, that was no problem. We are very excited to have another church in Jacksonville, and we think that that is, is, is a really good thing. And Mr. Pierce, we do appreciate you coming here and explaining all this to the, to the neighbors. Um, that being said, um, you know, we do, we had some of the same concerns. You know, the, the site work started, and nobody kind of really knew what was going on. And then all of a sudden, there was dump trucks, and the dump trucks were getting stuck, and the people were in the road, and the modulars showed up. And, and so I think that, um, I think that that was, I think it just got started on, on the wrong foot. But, um, the major, the major concerns that, that, that we had, mostly were the aesthetics of the building, not a church. And, and I think the traffic is important as well, and I think a study would be really great. And, um, if there's some way that we could work that in the, on the front side, that would be excellent. But the aesthetics of the building in general, just, it seems that most of the homes, like has been said, are brick, and they have a pitched roof. And I think just that flat roof design is very unappealing. Um, it, it seems like that was popular in the sixties and the seventies, and maybe not as popular now. And so I think that was, you know, on that corner, we don't want people to say, "Oh, you're in that neighborhood with that weird, uh, church on it right there when you turn in," or whatever. You want it to say, "Oh, that's, you know, look like kind of what's, what's in the neighborhood." So, um, anyways, I just wanted to speak on behalf and say, you know, we, Nick and I, my husband, we're not against the church, and we are so happy that, um, that this, if it can happen, we just wanna make sure that everybody is, you know, is, everybody can be as happy as they can with the outcome, that it's done, it's done correctly and properly. Thank you.
The gentleman that has your hand up on the front, yes, sir. Do you spare the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-yo?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address to the clerk?
My name is Edward Miller Jr., 111 Ridgewood Court, Jacksonville, North Carolina. I was here, thank you for, uh, this evening. I was here last week, and I heard a couple, um, concerns. I've been here since, uh, 2001, and I'm a resident now, since 2003. And I have driven around, looking at different churches, different properties, because of this, uh, that came up last week. There are churches around here that does not have a primary road, does not have a secondary road. If you go down Pine Valley, when you come from the golf course off Country Club, there's a church there that's built with wood, white paint. There is no off-road, just one road to go in and to come out. It's in a residential area. The other homes are brick. So, uh, when I heard that concern, then there's another one on, on Pine Valley, right there coming off 24. Doesn't have a back road that's coming off. You go in one way, you come out one way. And then on Brenmore, right, when you come off, uh, and you come behind, if you was to look at New Life Family Worship Center, there's a brick church there, does not have a alternate rope to come out. You go in, offering more, you come back out. So when I hear these, there are buildings around here that does not have a secondary road. It's the same thing. And they are in the, in the neighborhoods. Uh, people get nervous when something new come around. When there's changes, even in the military, different leaders come in, because you don't know what to expect. And we operate out of our fear when these things happen from change. Change is good. And this county has grew a whole lot since I've been here and before I came here, I've been through it here. Then this is a great opportunity. I have seen buildings around here that's made of tin, are put up. But when you finish the whole process of it and see the outcome, then you see what it can become. Right now, we are operating because we do not know, or we don't like things new, and the neighborhood have to fix certain criteria. This is... We're making a judgment before they're finished product. And when the land was first purchased, the zoning was different. So, we wouldn't be here tonight, as they spoke about that. But it is an awesome opportunity. There are... If you look at New Life Family Worship Center, it was an old ragged movie theater for those of you that have been here for a good while. And the top is flat. I used to be there. Water would come through when it rained. So, there are buildings around here that does not have an A-frame or different levels. So, this right here would be in the same category as improvement. I just wanted to bring that to the council members to think about and the community, because we will be part of that community. And when we put something together, when we come together, we want to make sure that things are there for the benefit of the county and the citizens of the county. All right, thank you very much for your time.
You spare the information you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address to the clerk?
George Lambrou, 315 Woodland Drive, Jacksonville, North Carolina. Excuse me. Change is not always good. I have absolutely nothing against the church folks. My main concern that I'd like to share is the fact that Cheney Heights has traditionally been the quietest community in Jacksonville and just about the oldest community in Jacksonville. Our main thoroughfare, Woodland Drive, has just about turned into a thoroughfare, i.e. it's being used as a cut-through from Hargett Street around the Johnson Boulevard and vice versa. There are old homes. There are old families. It's a neighborhood in change, I have to admit, but there's still a lot of old, old residences, residents there, excuse me. The church property, there's probably a good reason that was never developed before now, if you go down and take a good, close look at it. But my main concern, one of my other main concerns, is the way this project has gotten off the ground, to start with. Proper protocol has not been followed, and true, it's got a lot of people in an uproar, to put it, to use the vernacular. Anyhow, we'd like to see good orderly growth throughout the city. I'm not against that at all, but we need to have another look at this request. We need to take a look at the traffic that will be involved, the ingress and egress in the community, and I'm all about fairness. And if it's done fairly, if the study is done, and everything is on the up and up, I have no problem. Thank you so much.
Gentlemen on the front row, you had your hand up.
Good evening.
You need to be smart. You spare the information you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the clerk.
Pastor Raymond Bradley, 112 Club Lane.
Thanks, sir.
I am the pastor for the Father's House Church. It's not United Kingdom Ministry. It used to be the old name. The property is still listed under United Kingdom Ministry. I'd first like to, if I can, I'd like to appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak on behalf of the Father's House Church. The initial onset of this building process, we bought the land almost five years ago when it was zone R7. Under R7, we specifically targeted this with the use of putting a church there. Having since then, there are some things that have occurred which have not allowed for us to build. In fact, George was our primary lender that we went to in order to fund the previous project, when he was working for BBNT. So, he is much aware and much aware of what we are able to do. This is not our first project. This is not the first time we've done this. I've done this before. Having said that, it is in keeping with the city that we are always trying to do our best to do the right thing. Sometimes ignorant is not an excuse, but we do our best to try to wade through some of the ambiguity of some of the codes as they are presented in the city. Sometimes they are not clear. Sometimes, when you approach people about giving answers, they give you an answer to either move you on and not give you all of the parameters. Having said that, I approached some of the city, which I am familiar with on so many levels of some previous projects, and therefore, our relationship is that we are on a first-name rate basis. So, I approached Ryan about whether or not it was permitted for us to be able to move the buildings on our property. At no time did he tell me that I would be in violation. He just simply... In our conversation, there was not a clear, direct, "Do not move." It was, "I would not advise." I also asked the city, "What is my requirement in order for me to be able to clear out a path?" Because when we bought the buildings, they gave us 120 days. That 120 days expired because we could not get the planning board meeting, and the timing in which it was deferred, I believe, two months. So, that threw off the timing in which the people who we bought the building from demanded that we move them. At that time, I called the city planning, and I spoke with Ms. Jeanette Hall. And I said, "Jeanette, what can I clear?" She said, "Based on current code, Section 22, Section 7, and Section 5, it states that you can clear an acre. There is also a section that states pre-approval requirements that you can clear up to an acre." So, therefore, I have it right here. And we already had submitted. We had already applied for. So, when I asked her that, she said, "You can clear up to an acre." Therefore, what we did was clear out just enough in order for us to be able to put the modular units on. The modular units, by the time you put them together, the reason why we chose the modular units is because, at the end of the day, they are covered in the same metal as a metal building. The only difference is they are not made out of steel. They are made out of steel, wood, and some of the basic building materials. The only difference is they're being brought in on wheels. That is the only difference. They have to meet the same code. They have to meet the same standards. They have to come all the way in, and then, at the end of the day, they are inspected at the same standard as a metal building is inspected. There is no difference in the way they are inspected. The requirements are the same. It's just that when you look at what has been presented, I did my best to try to line up with the current laws based on the information in which I had available to me on short notice. When we look at the buildings, there is a church around the corner from us, and it has been stated that they are concerned about traffic. The traffic on the church around the corner, which is the First Presbyterian, has on-street parking 20 spaces. The width from corner to corner is 26 feet. The street where we are on is 36 feet width, no on-street parking. They have four parking lots, all of which pour into a 26-wide street with 20 on-street parking. In the same distance that it would be from our church to the prison houses would be the same distance from their church to the same prison houses. They have more going on than what we would even have going on on initial start. They have 100 parking spaces pouring into a 26-foot-wide corridor with 20 on-street parking, with handicap. Their building does not have any A-frames at all. It is all flat. Every building there is flat. Part of their structures have part of brick and part siding. So, if we're keeping in line with what we are presenting, then that building would also be required. I'm not in an average-era role. I'm just trying to do the best that we can to represent our church. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Where were the modulars before you got them?
They were in Tennessee.
What were they used for?
They were used for a nuclear power plant.
All right, I need hands. Anybody else wish to speak to this matter? I see you already spoke. Someone in the back here. You spare the information you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help you God?
Yes.
Would you please state your name and address to the clerk, please?
Ms. Latoya Scott. My address is 6246 Mississippi Street, Camp Lejeune, North Carolina. I would like to say I hear the concerns of the neighbors with parking and the overall look of the building. But as my pastor did state, this is not his first rodeo with making something that they may see right now that looks a hot mess look great. And I think we all can look at the building on Marine Boulevard that he did, and I thought, you know, I think that looks awesome in itself, being that was a shell before he touched it. Also, we are already in the neighborhood, and I don't think that we are posing any problem with parking or anything right now. We may not be directly on that same strip, but we are only, what, like a block away or so? And I don't think that... I really do think it's more so just change that may... The change that may strike fear. I do believe that with both parties, neighbors and us, the church members, that hopefully we can come to an agreement where, you know, every... We can make a fair decision where both parties are happy. But as I stated a few minutes ago, we are currently already in the neighborhood. So, if any of them ever wanted to come and check it out, just to see how our parking is and what we're doing now, they can always come and check it out. And yeah, that's it.
Out of curiosity, where's your church located at now?
Inside the law office.
Oh, okay. That was mentioned before. Thank you.
Yeah, 1001 Hargett Street.
What? Hargett Street.
1007.
Thank you. Thank you. Ma'am.
Good evening.
You spare the information you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help you God?
Yes.
Would you please state your name and address to the clerk, please?
My name is Mercedes Valentine. I live at 500 Hammock Lane, Jacksonville, 28546. I can't really speak to all the technical stuff. We study the site plan. We look at them, and every time I look at them, I keep saying, "What is that?" Because I really don't understand the technical part. But I can relate to the neighbors. I can relate to the people in the community saying, "What in the world is going on?" I can relate to that. But my concern is, on this side is, we've had that sign up for quite a very long time. Not one time did any one of the citizens try to find out who we were, what are we going to do, what kind of church are you going to have? Is it going to be a big building? Is it going to be a small building? See, because any time that anything happens in our neighborhood, we want to know. When a sign comes up in my neighborhood, I want to know, "What are you guys going to do?" We don't wait till after the buildings come down, the trees are down, the modulars are in, and all of this ruckus is going on to then say, "Wait a minute, what are you doing?" We're building a building. And I understand that they can't see the end result, because it's our vision. So, nobody can relate better that this is the beginning. This is not the way it's going to look. This is not how it's going to affect your neighborhood. It's going to even bring out your neighborhood the more, because now you're going to have this church here on this corner in this neighborhood, who's going to bring people to see one of the oldest neighborhoods in this city, not to destroy it, not to take away from it. And right now, it looks like three modular homes. When it's all finished, the value of the property is not going to be much less than the property, the value of their homes. We didn't buy the land at a discounted sales rate off-market. We bought it from a realtor, who said, "This is the property value in this area for this land." And we've been faithful. And all the time that the land has been vacant, we have paid taxes. So, I see that where the concern is. But we are building a vision, and this is not the way it ends. Right now, it's, you know, at the beginning of every venture, it's upside down, there's a mess, and even the ordered chaos. I get that, and I get the concerns. But I can tell you from this side, knowing what the end result is, we're not taking down. If anything, once we get done with what the Father's House is doing, that community will say, "You know what? I can see it now." But we see it already. We saw it when we bought the land. And I just want to let everybody know, kind of like ease everybody's concern, and, you know, that, "What is the church doing? Look at these modular homes." That was our concern as well. But when we saw them together, we can see what they look like. They look like a structure. They look like a business. When we bought the land, it was okay. This is what it was. We found out by happen chance, when we started applying for permits, that the code had been changed on the land. But instead of raising an uproar and coming back and meeting with you guys, we said, "You know what? We're just going to move forward. We're going to abide to the new code, and we're going to do what needs to be done." And I believe we've done that. There may have been some slip-ups. Okay, so, let's deal with those. Let's see what we're going to do to correct those and get on the right foot, to help the church and to aid the community. Thank you.
Any other hands? You spare the information you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address for the clerk?
Richard Ayuso, 300 Woodland Drive. Thank you. In relationship to the traffic pattern and the safety issues, it was stated that the street is 36 feet wide, and a standard lane of traffic is 16 feet wide. So, that makes the three lanes of traffic 38 feet. So, that makes the street short of three lanes. So, if we have parking, cars parking on the street, that means two cars, three cars cannot go down that street. And that's what our concern is as well. The First Presbyterian Church has been there a long time. They empty out onto Johnson Boulevard. There is a traffic light there. We have not really seen traffic at all coming through when their service is let out. We are concerned about the appearance of the building as well. If you blow up the plan, there is no vegetation, no type of land... If you blow up the plan, there is no vegetation, no type of landscaping around the building. It's on the outside of the building by the sidewalk as well. But if you were to empty out onto Haggage Street, you do have the three lanes. You have a turning lane. There is more traffic. The buffer zone on Haggage Street as well, the commercial buildings, they emptied out onto Haggage Street. There's more traffic there. There's certainly more room to move. There are sidewalks. We do not have that in the neighborhood. You'll be letting out 53 cars at a time of the day, at a time of the week, when families are home, people are out, and children are playing. That is our main concern about the safety issue as well. If the church were to let out onto Haggage Street, it wouldn't be as much of an issue at all. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a hand up in the air over here to my left. Do you swear that the information you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Please state your name and address to the clerk.
Yes, my name is Chantel Sutton. I live at 1715 C Colgate Drive, actually, Kinston, North Carolina, 28501.
Thank you.
I've lived most of my life here. Basically, I've been to school, elementary school, Belfort Homes when I was a little tiny girl, New Bridge Middle School, and Jacksonville High School. I hear many comments about the characteristic of the buildings, but the characteristic is not of the buildings, it's of the people in the community and the people in the neighborhood. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. You see me nervous? I'm sorry.
Take a deep breath.
But...
Doing great.
I see so much about complaining or certain negativity when the problem or when something is brought new. Now, the traffic with the school and everything like that, church is on a Sunday. School is usually Monday through Friday. And I feel like if the comments before, if you didn't complain about the traffic before because we were technically already there. So technically, the comment regards to the traffic is void because we've already been there, and we would hope to still be there if that's possible, and I'm believing for it. But that's all I have to say. And I drive a hour every Sunday just to get to the church because I love these people. It's not like it's a hooligans in the middle of a neighborhood. We're not throwing a club. These are people. These are positive people. These are positive people in the neighborhood and in the community. So, I mean, you see these people come. We have... there's such thing as a good traffic as well. You see people and awesome people join the church, and you see the community. And they're like, "Oh, this community looks so nice. Maybe I want to take a look." So technically, this could be a good thing for the community because as a community as a whole, as a church, some of the people might see the community as even their home. You never know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy. Is Jeremy still here? Quick question for you. All right. In that particular zoning district, tell me, what are some examples of places that could locate there? That would be permissible or uses that were permissible pursuant to special use? Special use items?
Other special uses? The RSF-7?
Yes.
All right. Community centers are special use in the RSF-7. Libraries, museums, senior centers, adult daycare, commercial child daycare are all special uses within the RSF-7.
Those are the only ones?
And high school. But elementary and middle school are permitted uses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
May I suggest, as I do frequently on these quasi-judicial hearings, that counsel engage in your discussions until someone gets ready to put a motion on the floor because there may be other evidence you want to hear. And once you close the hearing, it is closed. But that would be my suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me ask the attorney a question. For me to make a comment about why the code was changed, do I need to be sworn in or...
I think... Raise your hand. You can sit right there and do it too.
Let's get there's the Bible somewhere.
Do you affirm that the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We're down. Take my honesty.
Thank you.
When the UDO was being studied, there were specific things that we identified that we felt should become special use permits. Those were primarily based upon impacts. It is certainly true that you can look in Jacksonville, any other community, and you can find churches that have been where they are for a long time. But we also know that churches, if they're going to be successful, which I will state publicly, I hope they all are successful, that they do generate traffic. Schools generate traffic. Fraternal organizations, you know, create traffic. When we worked with the Citizen Committee, they agreed that in residential communities, we should encourage certain activities, that churches were an activity that were normally compatible with residential structures. But we also agreed that they should not be automatic. Now, I recognize that the church bought the property under the old zoning. It was deliberate that we made churches throughout the city, not just this site, special use permits. And the reason why was so you could assess the impact. So when you do look at the Presbyterian Church across the street, recognize it has an impact. Recognize that it was approved at a time when the zoning law did not require this hearing, and recognize that we specifically changed the code to make sure that impact is analyzed. Can I clarify any of that for you?
Do you swear that the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Please state your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Robert Thomas. I stay at 109 Galloway, Hubert, North Carolina, 28539. I've been with Pastor Bradley now, I think, since 2007, July. And we've been through a whole lot, and we've walked together, and we've built together. And I believe that through working with the community, that we'll be able to find solutions to their problems. Because when we come into a community, if we talk to each other, if we communicate with each other, we can always find a solution. So even with the traffic problems, that on our part, what we can do also is to be able to have us to stand out, to direct the traffic, to make sure that everybody's safe, and also enforce and say, "Make sure that you obey the laws, the speed laws, and so forth." And also, we would be using the building, I mean, the building on Sundays and Wednesdays. So it's not an everyday thing that we would be there and causing traffic backups or anything
Thank you. Anyone else? You had something to add?
I just want to address a couple of issues. It is a 36-foot road, and to correct a statement was made tonight, we've developed a lot of streets around town. And a 36-foot-wide facility, a normal traffic lane, even in most of our parking places, is like 24 feet. But that would accommodate two-lane traffic. And a normal traffic travel lane is 11-foot. So this street does, would definitely accommodate if someone did park on the side. In fact, when I went down Woodland today and rode through, there were three different cars parked along the road, and it still accommodated for me to be able to pass with a car parked on the side in an oncoming traffic. So I just want to clarify that. And the second thing I want to clarify is, I would work with DOT and travel events, and they encourage... I would think if we'd have a hard time getting a DOT permit, it certainly wouldn't be a given on Haggage Street. Plus, we don't front on Haggage Street. But they encourage side street entry anytime you can make one. So I just want to make sure I brought that point out. Thank you.
Do you swear that the information you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the clerk.
Shamika Cooper, 701 Jasmine Lane, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28546. I just wanted to speak on the community's concern as far as safety and traffic and things of that nature and children on that area playing. I definitely do understand. I live in Aragona Village, and the speed limit is 35, and people do every bit of 40. So I do understand that we at the church also have quite a few children, as you might have seen, and you heard them outside. So the concern as far as children and safety is just as much of a concern for us as it is for the community. So we definitely can attest and assure that we will do everything within our power to make sure that children are safe, not only in our church, but also in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel, are you all ready to discuss? Anybody have anything? Pardon?
Yes, someone can put a motion on the floor that you certainly can close it, mayor, and entertain that motion.
Make a motion. We close the public hearing. I think we've heard all the opinions, pro and con.
So somebody's going to put a motion on the floor.
I did.
I made a motion to close it.
You can close it, mayor, if everybody's ready to move forward.
All right. We're back in regular session. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the proposed request, approve the site plan and the... just approve the special use permit and site plan.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to deny the special use site and site plan. Based on... Based on what?
If you look at Exhibit A, you had...
I would say it was...
203 didn't meet one of the A through Gs, whatever you... F.
E and F.
Found in the negative.
In the negative.
We have a motion from Mr. Thomas.
I'll second that.
And a second. Any further discussion?
What's the reasons for turning it down? Pardon?
He said E and F.
I'd like the explanation of what they are.
Well, E and F, which is the development will not substant... will not... well, will substantially injure the value of adjoining properties if you find that in the negative. And F, the development is not compatible and not in harmony with adjoining land uses and the development pattern of the immediate area. And Mr. Thomas may want to elaborate more as to why he feels these are found in the
I think we heard testimony just to the opposite, that special uses, libraries and so on, are compatible with neighborhoods of that type and the special uses. And I haven't seen any testimony that property values will suffer adversely because of the location of a church. That's my opinion.
My opinion is the building as presented is a commercial building appearance and does not fit with the harmony of a residential neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, mayor. I think for me, it almost mirrors the Williamson, Don Williamson property and zoning that we heard from residents that had some major concerns about a lot that had been there that, you know, again, like somebody said earlier, the residents kind of knew what was going to happen. But when they came forward with the concerns that they had, it sort of overweight the situation in the vote. I think we've got an obligation to the people that are living in that neighborhood, that have made significant investments in the redevelopment of that neighborhood. And we, you know, that's why we have these open forums to where we can hear the concerns of the people that live in certain neighborhoods. And these special uses are put before us to hear the evidence. And I think that maybe the process got skewed along the way, and there should have been more dialogue between the developer and the neighbors so that potentially there could have been some harmony. And I think we directed the same thing at that particular location. We tried to get the developer to meet with the residents, to find some mutual agreements and resolutions, and unfortunately, that didn't happen or didn't work out. But I think that the process here could have been a little bit different had the approach been a little bit different to where the neighbors felt that their investment was secure in that neighborhood. And I think that I would agree with the comments that have been put on the table in terms of the building and the harmonization of the building versus the use and the adjoining neighbors.
I'm not sure you can make the argument about harmony. Prior to the UDO, that building could have been... that church could have been built as a matter of right.
Maybe so, but I think...
Harmony arguments notwithstanding.
Right. And I have nothing against the church, or this is not about a church. It's about us being able to support neighbors and people that are making investments in neighborhoods and spending dollars for rehabilitation and securing the values of those neighborhoods. We're having these problems in the older part of town, across the street, in the Bayshore area. People are making significant investments, and we have to sort of protect those investments if we have the opportunity to do so. And all I'm saying is that this situation mirrors what we've already seen in the past and voted against, not because it's a church or it's a library, or, you know, it may have been the same situation of a library. I just think that, you know, these situations require dialogue. People can't just... if it's a special use area, they've got to talk to the adjoining neighbors and make sure that they can build a win-win situation where they can live in harmony and that the aesthetics are correct for the people that are living adjacent to them. I think there was a few people that mentioned that they have no problem with a church, that they, you know, invite the church. But would it have been better if there had been some dialogue to ascertain some win-win relationships there? You know, that may be something to consider.
I had one piece of information. This afternoon, we did contact John Pierce to recommend that there be a neighborhood meeting. After that, I did receive a personal telephone call from the pastor, and I suggested to him that this matter be postponed so he could have a neighborhood meeting. He chose not to do that, which is certainly his right. But as the council deliberates this, we want you to be aware that while it was late, and it was today, we gave the advice that we felt, as the manager of the city, I gave the advice that it was best to have dialogue before you put the city council in the position of having to decide. He had the right to make his decision. You have the right tonight to make a decision. You also have the right to direct that no decision is made, but that it be continued, and that you direct the staff to hold a public meeting with the neighbors and the petitioner. You have many options. But I do want you to know that that advice was given today.
I have a question. Dr. Woodruff, currently, the church is meeting at the Popkins Building, the old law firm, correct? Approximately how many cars are parking there?
To be quite frank with you, Ms. Washington, I did not know where the church was, so I can't answer that. Maybe the petitioner or the pastor, the John, someone could answer that.
Did you want me to answer that?
Yes. Whoever... Currently, how many members?
Could you come up here, please?
It's very rare that I actually come down when parking is there. So I would assume 30, 30, 40 cars that park there. I'm either there before everyone, and I'm pretty much on the last leg to leave.
I'm either there before everyone, and I'm pretty much on the last leg to leave, so I would assume 30, 40.
Now, are all of those cars for the majority parked in that parking space, or are you parking in that parking space and on Woodland Drive?
We're not in overflow. We are not. Because of the way the parking is set up, there are some grassy areas that's around, and we make it work. And then there are two, there, you have the old DMV, which is now the mortgage company, which has parking spaces there, which is nothing more than just cross over the little median there, and you wouldn't even, wouldn't even impact Hargit Street at all.
Okay. And currently, there has not been no neighborhood meetings with the residents and with the future tenants?
I will attest to this. I did walk the neighborhood, and I did speak to probably 20 residents, face to face. There are some residents that are not here that expressed, there was one gentleman that I live, I think it was right across the street from you, he has a white van in the yard. I walked up to him, and I spoke with him concerning what we're going to do, and all of the neighbors who were around me saw me actually talk to him, and they said, "Did you talk to the guy?" And he said, "He doesn't talk to any one of us. He talked to me for 20 minutes." And at the end of the conversation, he said, "Continue doing what you have to do, God bless you." So I did make personal contact with about 20 of the neighbors. I went from door to door and actually spoke with them. And the majority of the ones that I spoke to said that they got a petition or flyer on their door, and that some people came to them and asked them to sign, and some of them just simply did not want to sign, nor wanted to have any part of it. They were glad to see us. So I did make attempt. I did reach out.
But there was not, but has there been something collectively with the neighborhood as opposed to individually? Because you can probably understand, talking with someone individually is different than talking to...
I'm a neighbor now. I'm a neighbor.
Oh, I'm not saying that you're not, sir. I'm just saying, just giving the residents in that particular area...
I'm not opposed to that at all. I really am not.
To having a collective meeting with the neighborhood?
I'm not at all.
Why did you tell?
There is a motion on the floor.
Is there any other comment?
Thank you, I have something.
Mr. Willingham.
Okay, thank you. You can be seated, I don't have...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I live downtown Jacksonville. I live in a neighborhood. When we went through planning and we actually created a zone, and it was important to us to have churches in the community, so churches were permitted use in RD3 when we first developed it. We have churches, lodges, several, all in session at the same time sometimes. And the problem for my neighborhood is parking. Traffic is not a big deal. And of course, you know, I grew up in this city, and so I know Woodland Drive, and it didn't just become a thoroughfare, it's been a thoroughfare for as long as I can remember, where people take a shortcut to get to Hargit Street and New River. So the parking is more of a concern for me. And the adequacy of the off-street parking, because the street parking can be, create problems and a nuisance, particularly if it goes into parking in front of someone's home. That is, can be a real big problem. I think the concern is more compatibility in terms of the appearance of the structure. Does it help, does it harm the community? I can see these things both ways. I think, from Mr. Bittner's comments, I gleaned that if it meets the standards, the codes, that's probably sufficient. From other concerns, the mayor, Pro Tem, it's the community concerns and the impact of the neighbors. Personally, if I was satisfied that it didn't harm anybody's property values, and all of the neighbors were against it, I would probably still support it. But I am concerned about the appearance. I think the off-street parking probably satisfies that major concern that I would have about parking spilling over into people's, in front of people's residences. The appearance, I'm not so convinced that it enhances the neighborhood and the other residential values. I understand that where you're located, and that building, I'm sure it's nice for what it was intended for, I wouldn't feel that that, as a new structure, would enhance the values of the residences. The building right across from this property does, however, and that was a building that was initially, it was an insurance company building. Very attractive and nice gateway to the Woodlands community. So if you're, if the plans are etched in stone, there may not be a need for a meeting. But I would hope, along the lines with Ms. Washington's concerns and the initiative that was taken by the city manager, that there could be some meeting of the minds between the community. I'd certainly like to give that an opportunity. And if there could be some further development of the plans, what is visible now is a concern to me, because I talk about empathy a lot, and how would I feel if this were in my neighborhood? And quite frankly, I would have some concerns about what we see there, because I'm confident it doesn't enhance. It may be some question as to whether it can compel, I mean, cause lowering of property values. That's a question for me. I'm not convinced of that. But I would like to give an opportunity, if there is that opportunity, where I could feel that it does enhance the neighborhood. I mentioned that where you are now probably doesn't qualify for the things that I'm talking about, but that's a building that's already there, and sometimes we talk about change and moving forward, we might want to look to how we don't duplicate mistakes, and we try to improve upon. So my feeling is that it'll be good if that meeting can happen, but I don't, I would be concerned if it's just a meeting to say, "Okay, this is what I'm going to do, you know, I'm sharing more information about what I'm going to do," as opposed to a meeting where there could be some suggestions made, because that's how we handled the meeting that Mayor Pro Tem Lazar is referring to, where there was that effort to compromise and bridge. And so I would certainly like to give that opportunity.
There is a motion and second on the floor. At this time, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Hands.
For the nays.
For the nays. For the nays.
For the nays.
For the nays. Okay. I'm gonna, I've heard these, the comments, the testimony, there's a lot of good reasons, but it all goes back down to the appearance of these structures, the compatibility, and I just cannot support allowing this. So I vote in favor of the motion. All right. We go to our report section.
Here, you got the public comment.
Oh, we got another thing over here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Non-consent item.
I mean, I flipped that page over, couldn't see that. All right, we have one more item on non-consent, and this is the voting delegates to the NCLM Annual Conference and Advocacy Goals Conference. There's going to be two, two different times for the delegate to vote, and...
I have a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Lazar as the voting delegate.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you're it. Thank you. All right, we go to our report section, and we'll start with, we'll start with you.
No report.
No report. Mr. Bittner?
No report this evening.
Mayor Pro Tem Lazar.
The only thing I would ask is that I sent out the legislative goals that we are going to be voting on. If there's any changes or concerns, please shoot me an email beforehand.
That's all.
Yes, I forwarded it to Dr. Woodruff, and he forwarded it to everyone.
Yes. Okay.
Real quick, I just want to say I had the opportunity to go this past Friday night to the MIA ceremony at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and I think it was probably the nicest night we've had since about the middle of May. It was very, very nice. The speaker was fantastic. He was 84-year-old retired Colonel Schumpf from Fayetteville, and the story he had to tell of his five years in captivity, and many of the events really hit home.
What was his name?
Schumpf, Schumpf. An amazing individual, and like I said, what he went through, and what so many people went through, it kind of makes you embarrassed to what bothers us today, you know? And I think about people, they lose their cell phone, they thought the world's ended, you know? He spent, what did he say, probably a third of his time in solitary, and just a real moving event. I'm glad I had the opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Wood.
Proud to be here, sir. No report.
Proud to have you here. Dr. Woodruff.
Just one thing, based upon the workshop this evening, we'll be polling you for the possibility of your follow-up workshop regarding Surgeon City. Beyond that, no report, other than thank you for the guidance you always give this city.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Curtis.
Aye.